Give the Westland City Council a word, please. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance tonight led by two students from Taft-Galloway Elementary, Anthony Lambert and Connor Wilson.
I present the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its stance, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you'll stay right there, Councilman Johnson will be right down to talk to you.
Okay, we're gonna go with Anthony Lambert first. You ready? Come right over here, bud. Anthony is a second grade student in Ms. Thibodeau's class at Taft-Galloway Elementary, correct? Uh huh. He's eight years old and lives with his mom, one brother, and four sisters. He loves to play the Wii. Which game's your favorite?
Michael Jackson.
You're pretty good at it? Not me. He loved to dance to Michael Junior's Jackson songs and watch movies. Can you do the moonwalk?
Yes.
Let's see it. All right. Good job. Favorite subject in school is reading. What do you like to read, bud? Me too. You like fiction?
No.
No. We could be here all night figuring this out, couldn't we? Anthony, we'd like to thank you for coming up and doing the pledge tonight. You guys did a fine job on behalf of the mayor, council, and the administration and the city clerk. We have a certificate for you thanking you for appearing with us. There you go. What about you? Hang on, dude. Thanks, bud. I gotta have this. That's my chichen. Now, it's all about you, dude. Connor Wilson, correct? Yes, I thought I'd get that one right. First grade student in Mrs. Thibodeau's class, Taft-Galloway Elementary also. Connor, seven years old, lives with his mom, brother, and sister. Loves to play with his cars. What's your favorite car?
A Thomas.
A who?
Thomas.
Thomas, is that a car?
Thomas, a train.
Oh, Thomas, a train. Been a long time since I've seen Thomas. Love to watch TV, play basketball with brothers and sisters. Can you beat them?
Yes.
Uh huh, I thought you might. Favorite subject in school is, and it was mine too, gym.
Gym.
Gym. What are you doing in gym?
Um, I, um, I run around.
That's a good thing to do in gym. Well, Connor, you too have a certificate. I'd like to thank you, fellas, for coming up and doing the pledge, and if the family and somebody from the school would like to come up? You don't get a choice, you have to. They didn't think they were gonna get away with that, did they?
Yes.
Oh. We'll go to Ms. Thibodeau first, a few words.
I just would like to say these two are two of my star students. Connor's in first grade. At our school, he's on our recycling team, so he helps collect recycling once a month, and then Anthony is on our student leadership team as well. And like I said, they are two of my very star students. I love having them in my class.
My name's Rebecca. I am Connor Anthony's principal, and they were chosen today because we are a leader in me school, so we follow the seven habits of Stephen Covey at Taft-Galloway, and these two couldn't live the seven habits any better. They come to school every day, they use their manners, they're proactive, they think when when all the time, they're willing to help anybody, and they do a fabulous job. So immediately, we thought of the two of them to come and be with you guys tonight.
My name is Dawn, and I'm Connor's mother. He loves school so much, he comes to school every single day and with a smile on his face achieves everything that he's set out to achieve every single day.
Hi, I'm Anthony's mom, Nancy, and his sisters Amanda and Chloe, the others are at home, and we'd just like to thank the school for the opportunity for Anthony to come. He's been very excited, a little nervous, but extremely excited to do this, and he is a well-behaved child who loves school.
Once again, fellas, you did a fine job, and that moonwalk was right there, buddy.
Yes, he did.
Yes, he did. Thanks, appreciate it, guys.
Lady and gentlemen, that's a hard act to follow. Good luck. Councilwoman Bryant?
Present.
Councilwoman Coleman?
Here.
Councilwoman Hammond?
Present.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Here.
Councilwoman Care?
Present.
Councilwoman Reeves?
Here.
President Godbout?
Present.
Accord, Mr. President.
There are no announcements or presentations this evening. We'll move into citizens' questions or input on the agenda. Citizens will be recognized before the business of the meeting commences to address the council pertaining to items that are specifically on the business agenda. Citizens are asked to limit their questions or input to three minutes. Is there anyone on my left?
Good evening, Councilman Bill Campbell. On the consent calendar, approval for contract extension with Reaction Direct for selling and promoting all advertising and promotional opportunities provided by the city of Westland for a two-year contract. One, what was the total cost of the last contract? Two, why do we not have the cost on the agenda? Three, how much revenue does Reaction Direct bring in annually to the city for selling, promoting, and advertising what opportunities it says the city provides? And four, I'm confused with the words "opportunities provided by the city." Aren't these opportunities already paid for by the businesses and our taxes such as DDA and TIPA? I find it bizarre as a business owner that my own taxes are being used for a sales entity to come to my business and ask me for money again for a marketing package when this should simply be a click on our webpage for a small fee. Five, Reaction Direct has no web presence on the web whatsoever. What does Reaction Direct solicit, how does Reaction Direct solicit business and marketing opportunities, and do we have a bid for these services tonight? Thank you.
Is there anyone on my left? Anyone on my right? Mr.
To the council and the citizens, city of Westland, regarding Consent Calendar Item C, Purchase Agreement for DTE LED Lights Conversion Project. City costs not to exceed $29,688 to be paid out of the Metro Act Fund. My question to the mayor, I'd like to have him respond in his final comments or earlier if he decides to, which he never does. How many LED lights have you put in the city of Westland since you doubled our lighting fees? Presently, Mayor Wild has transferred, according to the budget, $195,000 per year from Metro Act Fund into the general fund, and when we had our lightings doubled, our taxes for lighting, that Metro Act was in there to help offset the cost to all the citizens and the city, and he took it out. One of the council members even asked him at the time, "Are you going to take that money out and put it in the general fund?" And he stated, quote-unquote, "No, I am not." Well, it is in the general fund now. It's on page 19, and anybody wants to check it out. The other thing is, the Metro Act money was in the lighting fund to offset the cost, and I would like to request that this council form a majority and make sure that that $195,000 would be spent each year and maybe with matching funds or grants. Livonia's getting a grant right now to put in LED lights because in the long run, it's gonna save us a lot of money. If we just keep going along as we are now, you know, we're gonna end up having to increase our lighting in another four or five years. Livonia said it was in the last month's paper on front page that the cost would pay itself back within a couple of years. Thank you.
Anyone on my left? Anyone on my right? Anyone else in the audience? We'll close citizens' comments on the agenda and move on to the consent calendar. Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Reeves, supported by Councilwoman Bryant. There was a question on Item B. Mr. Smith?
Through the chair. I know, Mr. Campbell, I had several questions. The net that we receive from the contract is around $25,000 a year, and that's put in a reserve account for future projects. So, I know he had some other questions, but I think that's the net that we receive from the contract.
And then on Item C? The DTE? Ramsey?
We have Debbie Kane with us here, and I don't know if you had our count of how many LED lights we have converted in the city. However, the cost of the city on this project is $29,000. The savings, the annual savings on it is $23,000, so the payback time on it is 1.2 years. So after the first year and two months, this project will have savings of about $23,000 a year. Debbie, do you have any count for the LEDs?
Yes, there are 29 LEDs today, and we're planning...
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from the council? Councilman Coleman?
On Item B, I know there were some questions from the audience. I will support this tonight, but my concern is on the Welcome to Westland signs. There are, I know there's at least one example where there's an obstruction of view. If you're in the 711 at Joy and Wayne Road, and you're making a left and you're looking left, it's very difficult to see traffic because of the advertising on that Welcome to Westland sign. So what I want to do is see if we can just make a suggestion and have somebody from Reaction Direct or somebody from the city department take a look at that obstruction of view if you're in your car and you're looking along the roadway. I think we just need to, we need to take a second look at that just for safety reasons. So, I'll be voting yes. Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the council? Any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
Council President, Council approves the following. Minutes of February 17th. Contract extension with Reaction Direct for a two-year period commencing April 1st, 2015, and ending on March 31st, 2017, and it authorizes the mayor and city clerk to sign on behalf of the city. Purchase agreement with DTE LED Light Conversion Project not to exceed $29,688 and authorizes the mayor and city clerk to execute on behalf of the city. Reprogram CDBG Home and NSP Funds as follows. From CDBG Section 108, loan $54,840. To CDBG Acquisition Demolition, $54,840. From Home, homeowner rehabilitation, $50,000, with $25,000 going to Home, home buyer assistance, and $25,000 to Home Acquisition Rehab Resale. New Business, approval of revised site plan for proposed elevation update, Westland Plaza, 6503 North Wayne Road, Parcel 03499, 0030-Split 703, Northwest Corner of Wayne and Hunter.
Motion by Councilman Johnson, is there support? Support by Councilman Coleman. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, sir. This is the property in question. It is Westland Plaza, as the clerk had indicated, at the northwest corner of Wayne and Hunter. This is a revised site plan approval request to update the entire building. This is something that the council saw August 18th of last year in preliminary form, and we're just following through with the final revised site plan approval. It is a multi-phase refacing, re-roofing, restructuring of this center that is gonna make quite a difference at this corner. The first phase is currently under construction, and that is in the extreme corner where the fire occurred, and that building is currently being rebuilt. But all of these improvements that you see will basically reface the entire structure. There is one component as well that includes a memorial in the corner for our fallen firefighter. I think that was as well part of the August 18th presentation. All affected departments have reviewed this, sir. There has been no objection expressed, therefore approval is recommended. Thank you.
Is there any questions from the council? Any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
Item Two, Approval and Adoption of Prepared Resolution to Temporarily Relocate Precincts 30 and 31, Hay School located at 30600 Louise, to Cooper School located at 28550 Ann Arbor Trail for the August 2015 primary election only, and to transfer back to Hay School for the November 2015 general election and all subsequent elections.
Motion by Councilman Care, is there support? Support by Councilman Hammond.
Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
Item Three, Approval of Vouchers As Amended.
Is there a motion?
Some.
Motion by Councilman Reeves, is there support? Support by Councilman Hammond. Is there a question? Councilman Reeves?
Yes, I had a question in reference to a motor pool issue at Red Holman. I had the opportunity to speak with Mr. Smith today and get that cleared up, and I just wanted to make that known and acknowledge that, and thank him for taking the time to respond to my questions in reference to the vouchers. Thank you.
Thanks. Are there any other questions from the council? Any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to citizens' comments or requests. Citizens will be recognized at the end of the meeting immediately following the Agenda Item Approval of Vouchers. Citizens are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. All citizens wishing to speak will be heard. Is there anyone on my right? Yes, ma'am.
The following are my opinions based on facts as I understand them. Nice try, but you did not intimidate me. Last council, three councilmen, Godbout, Reeves, and Johnson, once again stepped over the line. At that meeting, I stated the trees located on private property that DPS cut down in 2010 cost we taxpayers $7,650. On one of the DPS invoices was Councilman Reeves' address. Although the address invoice reads "The work was performed at 5540 Farnham," Reeves explained that the tree was actually located on the neighbor's property behind him but was removed across his property. Restated that I never got in touch with the tree service that removed the tree. Why would I when I already ceded his tree location point? That did not stop him from calling me a liar. When? Former DPS Director Kevin Buford okayed the invoice addresses. Reeves' rage and scorn should be with him. President Godbout refused to accept my copy of the DPS invoice, which would have verified my statements. Why? He allowed others to. Paraphrasing Godbout, he accused me of slander. Where's the proof? That I have been coming here for five years saying the same things, that I don't want answers, just election-year talking points. I leave before they speak. My response to his comments: I have been coming five years, and in all five years, I have spoken of these issues, not just in election years. I did repeatedly ask, "When will they return our $7,650 tree dollars? Where is our half-million-plus library fund and interest income dollars?" And yet, in five years, they have never, never, including last council, answered these questions or shown any proof. Why would I stay? They just regurgitate the same old stale rhetoric. They are not allowed to publicly call citizens liars and slanders without proof. If they have some, let's see and hear it. Last council is my proof. I believe their false accusations make them unfit for public service. A public official who intentionally violates the Michigan Open Meetings Act shall be personally liable in a civil action for actual and exemplary damages of not more than $500 total, plus court costs and actual attorney's fees to a person bringing the action. They are supposed to work for us, not against us. We deserve better. You're fired, I hope.
Is there anyone on my left? Anyone on my right? Yes, sir.
To the citizens of Westland, 84,000 people who are being bled to death with these police and fire pensions and their contracts. These contracts, two of them have been ratified already, the police officers and the fire department. Next will be the lieutenants. They are so outrageous. They're up to their same old tricks. They're gonna be giving out four- and five-million-dollar pensions to the police and fire like they already have. Each individual is making as much if not more when they were working full-time. You have Michael Ready over here making $104,000 in pension. He was making $96,000 when he finished his last year of work, plus we're paying over $20,000 a year for his health insurance. I figured it out with his age. He worked 20 years and four days, by the way, and no company in the United States could survive actuarially giving out pensions like that. They'd be bankrupt. Well, Mayor Wild raised our taxes $7 million since 2010, and we are paying $7 million above and beyond what we were before he gave out these generic buyouts. And in 2009, in June, I passed out to the council and the mayor a couple times, the actuary, Roder, actually stated, "Even the first wave, we do not have the money, and you're gonna need $2 million." So he gave us one point, something milled in, and he raised our, your taxes, three and a half more mills. He has, he has a way of giving out contracts with no ability to pay for it and then come back and make you pay for it. The same thing he did with Belfour when he hired them for the water damage. We were broke. We had no money. Eight months later, I was at a study session, and I said, "Where's the money coming from?" And our leadership said, "Well, we don't know yet." Well, you know where it came from? It came out of your wallets and your purses. For four years, your water rates were raised 23 cents per 1,000 gallons, and it's, it's just obnoxious. These contracts of police officers, in conclusion, their average final compensation, the average person in America, you get three factors. Your last three years' average work, a multiplier, and how many years you work, multiplier, and what they're doing, they're, they're throwing in everything but the kitchen sink. They're going to give out pensions that are twice as much because they're gonna let them have a whole year's sick and vacation time added to it. They also get to add clothing allowance, $1,200. They get to add senior knowledge pay for $3,500, education allowance, $2,000, weapons qualification, $1,000. This is for the police officers. When you add that all up, the average person, if you receive, is $30,000 pension, which would be a gold-platinum card even if you worked at Ford. Now, all of a sudden, you'd be getting $60,000, $70,000, $80,000.
Time's up, Mr. Rock. Anyone on my left? Anyone on my right? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Bill Campbell. Our last council agenda with regards to the water rate increase was not clear, in my opinion. There is no detail on the agenda. Mr. DeWitt was the only resident who asked for an explanation. Further, the timing of such rate, to me, seems premature. Detroit has not voted on the actual rates yet, and Canton, according to the Canton Observer, will not vote on theirs until May 1st. Question: Why are we doing this so early? Meeting minutes. I'm asking our council to publish detailed meeting minutes for our public study sessions. We, I recently requested our council president's handwritten notes from our last study session. They only showed who was present and the agenda. No reason why the meeting was called or any details with regards to votes, polling, decisions, proposals, recommendations. This is a violation of the Opens Meeting Act. The new water rate is a prime example. How can the public know what is going on when the agenda had no detail and the Observer didn't publish the article in two weeks after the vote? So how is that open government? The new city webpage has a place for these minutes, but none are posted. The city of Wayne, not unlike other cities, videotapes their study sessions and post-meeting minutes on their city webpage. Please consult our city attorney, since he is the same attorney for that city. Finally, the over-the-top remarks made by Councilman Reeves, Johnson, and Godbout with regard to Mr. DeWitt's questions, calling her a liar and demanding an apology, shows one thing. It's time for you guys to go this year. Mr. DeWitt was asking about the library monies and removal of tree on a private property. She never mentioned anything about an election. You did. The tree topic was documented on emergency invoice, which had Councilman Reeves' address on it, which she conceded that was not on his personal property. These documents were supplied by a city whistleblower in 2010. The invoice is from DPS Director Kevin Buford and approved by the controller. It states, "A statutory filing invoice of Hill Tree, Hill Tree Service, the DPS is submitting this invoice, which was an emergency tree removal at his address. Please, please be advised, the tree was in the power lines and was about to fall, taking them down." So I don't know why DTE wasn't called and why we're taking down trees on private property. So my direct question to anyone, has anybody ever investigated, per our charter, on 6.11 in the charter? Mr. Mayor, can I have, can we have an outside independent ethics board look into this? As a taxpayer, I would like to know if there are any more invoices like this. One last comment to our council president. With regards to Mr. DeWitt leaving after her speech, that truly is her business. As a civil servant, you should be able to ask that. And B, we as citizens only have three minutes up here, thanks to this council. We're not allowed to come back after council and administration speak. Elected officials have unlimited time. Thank you.
Anyone on my left? Anyone on my right? Anyone else in the audience? We'll close citizens' comments and move on to comments from the administration. Mayor?
Mr. President? Good evening, everybody. First of all, to the council, I'd appreciate you coming in a little bit early tonight for an early study session on the rollout of the water meter program. So I know we covered a lot of, a lot of ground in a short period of time, but as you could see, I think we put together a good team, and we're definitely prepared to begin that Counsel, I'd like to introduce you to the city of Westland's new budget director. Ms. Debbie Peck is sitting here to my left from the third, from the end there. Mrs. Peck is the former Assistant Treasurer for the city of Novi. She's a certified public accountant. She's a very talented individual, and she's gonna be a great addition to the finance team here in the city of Westland. And she's already working overtime to prepare our budget that we'll be presenting to council by April 1st. The LED program, thank you, counsel, for moving forward with that. As was mentioned earlier, that at this point, we have 29 LED lights in the city of Westland. That was the project that we installed in the... That was the project that we installed in the Indianapolis Park subdivision a couple years ago, and that project is right online for the projections as far as savings go. And this project, it's actually along Wayne Road between Glenwood and Warren. If you remember, right after the holidays, we kind of went dark in that area because the lights, the circuits had failed. So DTE is actually installing a new circuit through there between, it's Wayne Road between Glenwood and Warren, and then it's going to go up between Central City Parkway and Park Grove up north of Warren. So at the same time, we're going to come in and put these LED lights in, and we're looking forward to saving some additional dollars there. And you, council, you probably remember that there's been some talk about a potential rate increase for DTE that they're working through. What we did on this project is we went ahead and put in that new figure, so in case that goes through, and it looks like it's probably going to, that way, our data is still, our savings that we're estimating is based on the new proposed rate. So if the current rate stays the same, we'll actually save even more on this project. Mr. Rock was here again tonight, and it's like watching Jeopardy. It's like I'll beat up the mayor for 300. So tonight, he did it again. But I'd just like to say that, you know, when we talk about these contracts, and I don't think there's anything wrong with talking about contracts, but I would ask that he gets his figures straight, because tonight he talked about, "We're going to give out four- and five-million-dollar pensions to our firefighters." Our firefighters don't make four- or five-million-dollar pensions. He talked about the fire chief. Once again, I'm going to say this once again, so everybody understands that the fire chief did retire from the City of Westland, and he is in the pension fund, and he is receiving his benefits. The way that we save money by having this fire chief come back is because we split him with the City of Wayne in a contract. Just on that position alone, we save $230,000 per year. That's why the fire chief is back. Besides, he's doing a great job. So whenever we talk about what the chief gets in pensions or benefits, we always forget to mention that the City of Westland saves $230,000 a year just on one position. Then when you add in what the City of Wayne saves, that's why we're sharing a fire chief. And the other thing to Mr. Rock and to everybody at home, the one thing I want to remind you is that the City of Westland taxpayers, and we've been through a lot together, and I've lived here a long time, and I know a lot of you have lived here a long time, too, you recently received your tax assessment bills, and, Mr. Rock, you got one just like I got one, and you like to look back at history. If you look at the history, the average taxpayer in the City of Westland with their new tax bill that just came out after all the doom and gloom and chicken little things that you talk about, the sky is falling in the City of Westland, Westland residents are getting 2015 services for 2005 taxes. So if you look back in history, the average Westland resident is paying the same tax bill in 2015 as they paid in 2005 with all the different things that we've talked about that were going to sink the city and bring the city down. And we all know that that didn't happen, and we're actually the only community in Wayne County that has a three-year balanced budget with almost a 10% surplus. So we need to keep that in mind. The last thing, council, is I just want to, actually, I got two other things. I want to thank the Westland Economic Development Team for hosting the first All-American Business Connect here at the Westland City Hall, and I think all of us in council, most of you were in attendance. I think we were surprised at not only the amount of business owners that showed up to learn more about the city in ways that we could partner with them to do business, but I think the diversity of the business community that was there, we really had a great turnout. And the staff, economic development, plus the IT, they did a great job, and I think we left a good impression with the business community. The last thing was just to remind everybody that Friday, March 20th, at 7:00 p.m. at the Mike Madonna Weiss Arena is going to be this year's Hockey Night in Westland. We still do have tickets available. They sell out quick. We've got them available here at City Hall, at the reception desk. We've got them in the mayor's office. They're available online if you go to the citywestland.com, and we also have them available at the Mike Madonna Weiss Arena. Tickets are $10 for adults, $5 for children, and then kids five and under are free. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. Anything from the city attorney's office this evening?
No, Council President.
City clerk?
Thank you. Just briefly, you will notice that on item two on the new business, it was a temporary move of Hay School to Cooper School. Two and a half years ago, the residents in the Livonia School District did pass a millage that would allow for some renovations in their K-12 buildings. Last summer, Cooper School moved to Hay Schools, and this summer, Hay School will be moving to Cooper School. It will not affect any voting for the May 5 special election. That will still remain at Hay School. It will only affect the August 4 primary election that will be held at Cooper School. Your new ID cards will go out right after the May election. I don't want to send them out before because I don't want people making a mistake and going to Cooper for the May 5 primary. So Hay School will be voting at Hay School for the May 5 special election, pardon me, and they will be voting at Cooper School for the August primary election, then back again at Hay School in November of 2015, and then each subsequent election after that. Thank you.
Thanks. We'll begin council comments with Councilman Coleman.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to announce that there will be a fundraiser for the Westland Veterans' Memorial Garden, or, I'm sorry, the Veterans' Memorial Garden of Westland. It's called Bowling Blast. It'll be at the Westland Bowl on Wayne Road. The address is 5940 Wayne Road. It'll be Friday, March 27th. Check-in is 7:00 p.m., and bowling starts at 8:00 p.m. The cost is $20 per person, includes two games of bowling, shoes, and pizza. There's 50/50 raffles and a mystery game. If you want more information, you can talk to me, or you can call Mike Williams, 734-634-5867. And again, this is to benefit the Veterans' Memorial Garden of Westland. That's behind the Westland Library. These flyers are available in the lobby of City Hall in the rotating kiosk if you want to grab one. I want to thank our Economic Development Team also. They did a great job at the Business Connect. I was really impressed with the way that was run. I think a lot of our businesses appreciated all the information, and I want to thank all the directors that participated in that, and also the events team that worked on that. I had spoken with the DPS Director earlier tonight, Ramsey. I wanted to thank him. We talked about the snow event that was in early February, and what happened was, is I was getting a lot of calls from residents about the way the snow was being plowed into intersections. It was pushing the snow up so high that people weren't able to get down the sidewalk or through the crosswalks. And I know that the expectation sometimes is really high from our residents, and in the future, we will look at finding better ways to keep that sidewalk access available. So I just wanted to comment on that. And then I also, I'd like to thank our Downtown Development Authority, our DDA, for all the work they do for the city. I was able to attend one of their meetings. Chairwoman Margaret Harlow was very welcoming, and it was very informative. And I know they're helping, they're looking at helping the city finance the knocking down of the old city hall, the fire station, and the recreation center. And this could really be a game changer for the Ford Road corridor and really change the look of that part of the city. So it's an important thing. And in 2013, there was debate over whether or not that site was going to be for sale or if it was available, and it was listed on the city's website that it was available, and there was some confusion about that. And I had asked at a council meeting at that time if it was available and what possible developments could be, or if there were discussions, and it was said that there were discussions, but, you know, those talks were still in the works. And what I can tell you now is I know that the DDA is looking at also helping the city out by getting the site appraised. And, you know, I didn't like being told that, at that time, back then, that the site wasn't for sale or available if it's going to be appraised for the purpose of being for sale. So to me, it was a little bit misleading, and what I think we should do is, instead of playing word games and playing with semantics, let's have a discussion as a community about what we'd like to see go there. And I think we can do a good job of communicating with the residents, and I'm not pointing any fingers here tonight, but what I want to do is just get the conversation going. And what I'll be doing is visiting different areas of the city and trying to find out what the residents think they want to see go there. I know there were a few people who are sitting with me here on the council who said they wanted to keep recreation in mind, and I know that it's possible maybe to have some developers come in and do something that might be able to make a lot of people in the community happy. So, you know, it's an important thing, and I've gotten a lot of questions on that lately, and I'll just, I'll wrap it up tonight. I know I'm kind of rambling, but I'll say that I look forward to hearing from the community about what we can do. And I think that we can all agree that, you know, we'll find the best possible option for that piece of city property, and I look forward to speaking with my colleagues about it, too. So that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Councilman Johnson?
Thank you. Just to tag on to Kevin's last thoughts there, I was one of those that said I'd like to see it remain recreational. I will only vote for recreational use on that property. I still stand by that. Glad to hear tonight that we finally conceded the tree wasn't in your backyard, Dewey. Been five long years. Wasn't there, I hope we don't hear any more about the tree. Last I got to say about it. Thank you.
Councilwoman Bryant?
Thank you. I would like to start by thanking Anthony and Connor for coming and leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. They did a wonderful job. I would also like to thank the Economic Development Team and all of the directors and everybody that was in participation of getting that together and was able to be there. Of course, I was not able to be there because I was working, but I did hear from actually a couple business owners and several other individuals that it was really a great event, and it was a great way to connect with our local businesses that we have now, as well as prospective businesses, to come and see what we have to offer here in Westland and start to build that connection with them. So I'd like to thank everybody involved. And also, to reiterate my stand on the Ford Road site, I also was, said that I would not vote for anything besides recreation in that corner, and I would for sure stand by that, no matter what is brought forward and what justification there could be. So I look forward to seeing what we can do there and looking forward to our team here building, looking into what can be put there to bring some wonderful things for families, kids, everyone to get out and enjoy that area. Thank you.
Councilman Kerr?
Well, again, one of the citizens that come to the podium and asks us questions, and then, I don't know, in the past, they sometimes say that we don't bother to answer their questions. Unfortunately, he got up and left after he asked his questions, so I wasn't quite sure if I was even going to answer him or not. But I will say one thing. Water rates here in Westland, we have study sessions every six months. We review them every six months. We don't do it once a year like we used to. We're being proactive. We get information quarterly. We get rate increases from Wayne County, Detroit, other sources at different times of the year. It's simply not good management to wait to just once a year to look at your water rates. So instead of using a neighboring city as an example, I would say that, once again, we are ahead of our neighboring communities like Canton and Livonia by keeping a close eye on our water rates and reviewing them every six months instead of doing it only once a year. Eh, I'm not even going to bother with the other one. Thank you. I'm done, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Reeves?
Thank you. I'm going to stand by my statements that I made at the previous council meeting. I'm not backing down for this garbage. I don't appreciate it. And it took him five years to make a phone call to find out a tree wasn't on my property. That's nuts. That's absolutely ludicrous. Mr. Rock was here two meetings ago, and he stated that Mr. Godbout, the mayor, Mr. Hammonds, and myself was responsible for driving the city in bankruptcy, and that they probably needed a financial emergency manager to correct some of the decisions that we made because we're spending all this money. Fact of the matter is, Mr. Rock, the mayor doesn't vote on anything. We do. Fact of the matter is, Mr. Rock, out of those decisions, 96% of them are seven-zero decisions. So for you to come up here and name specific people that are responsible, that's not true. It's totally not true. So, you know, you guys want to come up here and you make these slanderous remarks towards those of us who are up here trying to do what is supposed to be correct for the city's will, and it doesn't serve you well to get up here and make incorrect comments. If you want to state circumstances, in fact, bring the facts. You are entitled to your own opinion, all of you are, but you are not entitled to your own facts. Thank you.
Councilman Hammonds?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
I'd like to start by thanking Anthony Lambert and Connor Wilson, the two students from Taft-Galway Elementary, for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening. And I'd like to welcome Debbie Peck as our new Budget Director. She has about 30 days to pull together the budget before it gets presented to the council, so we'll be, I'm sure you have nothing to do for the next 30 days other than, yeah, no pressure, but...
It's a lot of budgets.
Yeah. So, welcome. I'm sure you'll do a great job for us, and we look forward to seeing the budget in 30 days. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn?